Thank you, Mayor. Dugout, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunities that you have afforded this body and the opportunities that you have afforded this great city. Please, on this day, keep in those, keep in mind those who are asking for help. Keep in mind those that need your guidance and your support and your love and your grace. May we all be better listeners of you as we guide the city and our lives. Amen.
Amen.
Our great citizens of the United States of America, and to the people of the United States, one nation underground in this hall with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Court, call the roll.
Councilmember John DeWorten.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brasington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stoff.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White. Here. Give the minutes of August 14th, which is stand approved as submitted and left any objections. Seeing none, we shall proceed. We have a few folks who signed in to speak to us. I think both of them know the drill, so that's good. Okay, three minute rule and everything. Joe, you're up first, and Mr. Bryan, you're after that.
Joe Farmer, 207 Alpine Way. Over the last year, I've told you about 10 conflicts of interest on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Two weeks ago, I told you about 11 conflict of interest on the Planning Commission. 10 days ago, the Planning Commission had an additional three conflicts of interest. It gets worse. All three of those, Lynn Salisbury, bringing his total to nine calendar year. This is a man you've pointed on April 24th for four more years. But it gets worse. He is a co-owner in an engineering firm with Chris Price, who's the chair of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Chris has had four conflicts of interest, including planning storage units in the Camper Town Plaza against the recommendation of staff and against the recommendation of fire marshal. But wait, it's worse. As I've told you earlier this, this year, he and his development group want you to abandon McNeil Court so they can build those 30 affordable housing units and build 32 luxury townhomes. They need this under the old code as plans for some of the units are too tall to be approved under the new code, so they're trying to slide it in at the last minute. But wait, it gets worse. If you deny abandonment of McNeil Court, when we submit the plans to the Board of Zoning Appeals, we'll need to, the Board of Zoning Appeals will need to approve a variance. Who's the chair of the Board of Zoning Appeals? This practice needs to end. You need to appoint members who are not tied to developers. Members who have conflicts of interest are not able to do the job they represent the citizens. We're eight months into the year, nine conflict of interest over the course of eight meetings, going against recommendations of staff and recommendations of fire marshal. These things we cannot tolerate. The Planning Commission chair had two conflict of interest while she was the chair. This is not good. They're not able to do business. They're just boards and commissions to work for the citizens. When they have to recuse themselves, they're not doing their jobs. They may as well have been absent. We need to replace these people who have conflicts and bring back some security that the citizens are getting what they deserve.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we do hear you, and you're right, if someone says recuse themselves repeatedly, that is a, that's almost like being absent from the, from the commission, so I think that's a good, good point. Mr. Brown.
Good evening, members of City Council. My name is Brian Brown. I'm the president and CEO of the Greenville Housing Fund. My address is 1615 Wade Hampton Avenue, and I wanted to provide a brief update on recent affordable housing success and to say my thanks and to share some gratitude with members of City Council. As you may recall, I have previously, previously shared some of the struggles with the low-income housing tax credit program in South Carolina administered by SC Housing. GHF has been working on two developments in the city of Greenville since 2021. The Riley at Overbrook with Shombur and Douglas Development, which will deliver 88 units of affordable housing, including 19 that are deeply affordable, at or below 30% area median income, supported, supported by project-based vouchers. The other project is the Gateway at the Green with Gateway Development, which will provide 72 units, 14 of which will serve very low-income households and extremely low-income households. We are excited to close on and break ground on these two developments, providing 160 new affordable housing opportunities in the city of Greenville as early as mid-October. I wanted to thank the city for its help on getting the low-income housing tax credit support we needed for these two developments. In particular, I want to thank Mayor White and Councilor Dow for their help and engagement with State Representative Bruce Bannister. If any of you know Representative Bannister, I would ask that you reach out to him and thank him for his leadership on the Joint Bond Review Committee, which approves some additional credit enhancements for these two developments in our city. I also want to let you know that we are seeing good progress at SC Housing on improvements to the administration of low-income housing tax credit program, and we are looking forward to new leadership at SC Housing delivering resources to address our affordable housing crisis through the critical tool that is the low-income housing tax credit program. With these two new developments, GHF will have deployed local resources leveraged by tens of millions of dollars of other resources on the preservation of 212 homes at Century Plaza and the new construction of these 160 homes in the city of Greenville in 2023 alone. Given the unprecedented rise in interest rates and the elevated construction costs across the housing industry, we are truly grateful to have this success this year. Again, thank you for ongoing support of the Greenville Housing Fund and on, and on affordable housing in our community. Appreciate your support.
Thank you. We appreciate the work, and we look forward to your upcoming meetings to finally utilize the funding we provided in the budget for you this year, and we have a meeting on, you have a meeting on September 21st, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, very important meeting and a step toward it.
Yeah.
Your loan, so we appreciate it. That's a, that's a big, that's a big thing.
Do also want to recognize Chandra's, Chandra Diller's contribution in helping shepherd that along, as well as the developers for the Riley are local developers, were very helpful in assisting in answering Representative Banner, Bannister's requests and needs. I have to say, he, he really did a stellar job for our city at the JBRC, and it, it really came together very quickly, and everybody, everybody did their part. Very exciting news.
Appreciate it. Okay, we proceed now to our consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Court, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorten.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasing.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoff.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. Thanks, staff, for the very significant annexations that are part of that, of that motion, so thank you, Ms. Lebrun, and everybody else for making those possible. Looking, I was looking to see how many times of what annex was on there. All good, all good. Appreciate that. Regular agenda, 15A.
And to approve a $100,000 in the miscellaneous grant fund and capital projects fund for the sliding rock creek trail phase two.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. I want to hear from everyone. Yeah, any questions? Let's hear a little more about it.
Let's hear a little more about it. Don't want to waste y'all's time. So a little bit of project background, this originated back in spring of 2022, originally brought to you guys. There was some input that some public input needed to be held before the project was prioritized using Greenways and Trails Fund. That happened in the summer of 2022 and then led to the development of a steering committee that's made up of a number of neighborhood residents and trail advocates, and there is a Nickel Town Neighborhood Association representative as part of that, part of that steering committee. So since then, we've been developing an RFP which has been awarded to Sexton Design and Development, and Ride Garden teamed up, and that will be a design-build project. And then during that same process, we developed an application with the help of our grant coordinator for the RTP grant, which is a state-funded grant worth up to $100,000 with match, and we were awarded that earlier this summer. So right now, we are, we are well into design. We have held a number of public input meetings, if you count Neighborhood Association meetings as part of that. The most recent was held last, last week as part of the Nickel Town Neighborhood Association. The design team was there to go over and receive, receive input from the neighborhood, and like I said, the steering committee has been plugged in through the entire process. The preliminary alignment shown here in red involves a number of bridge crossings as part of the existing topography and drainage, and will net the neighborhood approximately another mile of an extension of the existing Sliding Rock One project that was completed in 2017. RTP fund usage would go towards trail construction, bridge construction. There's some features that are planned as part of the mountain bike experience, directional and safety signage, and removal of invasive species.
Cool.
That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good one. No objection, clerk will call the roll.
No, no objection. No, I'm, I'm good with that.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoff.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
Just real quick on that, Ms. Mayor, I just want, thanks for helping on that, and thank you especially for making sure that the neighborhood was involved in the process of it and keeping them involved. It's always extremely important for our neighborhoods to feel like they have a voice in, in these things, so, so thank you. Appreciate it.
15B.
And to approve the FY 2023 operating budget for the South Carolina Technology and Aviation Center Board of Directors and to accept the FY 2022 annual auditor's report.
So moved.
Second. Court, call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorten.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stoff.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye. 16A, resolutions.
A resolution to provide for certain certifications of an abandoned building and an abandoned building site according to the South Carolina Code, Section 12-67100, located at 810 Pendleton Street.
Motion, please.
So moved.
Motion second. Go ahead. I'll leave it.
Yep. So this is part of the state legislation that allows for state income tax credits to people who redevelop properties in the city that perhaps might be overwhelmed with, with blighter or poorer conditions, so it encourages redevelopment, and you'll see, this is a site on Pendleton Street. You'll see what it looked like before, and the after is really nice. So this resolution allows for state income tax credit, so there's no cost to the city.
I so move this.
Motion second. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So the property owner will get a break on income tax once he builds his property, and in exchange for that, he or she is to provide a public and corporate purpose that results in job opportunities. So I couldn't zoom in enough to see what is this going to be and what are the job opportunities?
Well, the state legislation allow, the purpose for the redevelopment and abandoned buildings project is to eliminate light, eliminate.
Yeah, I know what it's for, but I also know what it's supposed to create, so my question is, I couldn't zoom in enough on that logo to see what it was going to be, so what?
Horton and Horton Law Firm.
Okay, so what jobs are they creating?
Well, that's, the, the majority of these are geared more towards redevelopment. It's not necessarily, in this instance, for the job creation. It's more about property values and improving our city.
But they have to make an application to the state.
Correct.
They have to fill out an application, they'd be, the state.
Correct, and there's a legal process that we have to go through too in terms of reviewing and making sure that the, the buildings have actually been abandoned for a certain amount of time, and so they meet those, those standards.
I'm just wondering what job opportunities they're, they're providing in exchange for a tax break. That's what I'm asking.
And I, that's not part of the, the application process.
It is a requirement, it's in our wherewithal, it's like the first one, the second.
It's part of the state legislation there, so it meets all that standard. It's part of the state legislation, so it meets all the standards set forth by the state.
Yeah, fair question. It's a law firm, got some jobs.
Well, is this a brand-new law firm coming to town?
It's a brand-new building.
Okay, but are they relocating from another bill?
I'm not sure.
I just think we should be asking these questions. See what I'm getting at?
So.
I'm saying, "whereas" is saying this.
Yeah, yes.
And, you know, I'll be happy to walk through those requirements set forth in legislation.
We should know.
In general, this was, our resolutions are generally set for it to be similar for every one of these cases.
Listen, it's much better looking than what's there. I'm saying, they are getting a tax break.
Yeah.
That is based on them providing something.
And, yeah.
I can't seem to get an answer as to who's providing that.
It's, they're investing in the property to redevelopment, and so that's meant to offset the cost of redevelopment.
I get the deal. I just don't see the job opportunities if they're relocating from another property.
Okay.
Okay. All righty, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it. 16B.
A resolution to approve a naming opportunity agreement with Nancy Phillips for the farmyard exhibit at the Greenville Zoo.
So move.
Second.
Motion second.
Hi there. Yep. So this is, just a little bit about the project. This is a total remake of our existing farmyard, I think you realize that, including a 6,000 square feet barn that has two levels. Downstairs with it will have stalls for the animals, upstairs will have a special event center that'll house 125 people. It'll have gateways on either side with a gateway that's attached to a giant rabbit exhibit and a gateway that has a built-in barn owl exhibit. It'll also bring five new species of animal, including alpaca, miniature donkeys. We'll have our existing coony-coony pigs and so forth, so they'll complement them, and I think it'll be a fantastic exhibit. It'll have an overlook into the park, and it's just going to be beautiful. The Phillips family donated $500,000 to the project. They weren't able to be here tonight, but I think it's important that we recognize them and that we also thank the Greenville Zoo Foundation for securing the gift.
Excellent.
Bill, this is the largest single donor to the zoo we've had in its history.
It is, yes. Yeah, absolutely.
We're getting a real surge in new donations for, maybe it was in Park, University Park, beginning, a lot of people stepping forward to make donations to Cleveland Park and some of other neighborhood parks around the city, unprecedented, over and over again. That's maybe one of them. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
16C.
A resolution to enter into an agreement with Visit Greenville SC to provide destination marketing services for the city of Greenville.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ayes have it. 16D. Don't speak in front of your life. 16D.
A resolution to document the required governing body review of the city of Greenville's submission of a grant application to the Bureau of Justice Assistance.
So move.
Second. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're proud to announce a $40,000 grant opportunity. What we'll use this for is for a robot. This is something we're behind in in technology, and we don't currently have any robots. We can use the robots for helping us in critical incidents, also for, in confined space rescues, places where you can't put humans and dogs or canines to help people. We can sneak our robot in and help get some communication going, film and see what lies ahead, and so we see this as a very good opportunity. We also, if you think back about the Imagine Upstate event, we know that kids and our public is, they really like the science, technology, engineering, math, and this will help us relate with our community, kids, take this out and do some, you know, show them the robot and let them talk about it and work with it, and so we think that's a good way to build relationships with our community also, so just another way to add to the police department's community outreach.
Our first robot.
First robot.
I thought we had one by then.
The chief may be a robot, for all we know. He does look a little different. Giant rabbit from the zoo. Artificial intelligence. All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it, thank you. 16E.
A resolution to approve an agreement for financial contribution with the Greenville Arena District.
So move.
Second.
I think we, Tricia, you can, no, you can come back for this, I think you should. We have Beth here and Heath, of course, too.
Yes, so this is a five-year agreement. The current agreement expired on June 30th, 2023, so this will take us out to June 30th, 2028.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And good to have you two with us tonight. Thank you. 16F.
A resolution to approve the bylaws of the Greenville City Economic Development Corporation.
So move.
Motion second. This is presented by the city attorney, is that right? Lee. No, just a little overview, perhaps, or John perhaps has.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to my fellow councilmembers. I'm really honored to be able to serve on a board, on a council that is incredibly collaborative, and I feel like this has been a collaborative effort. It certainly does not end here tonight. We still can work on things, as we will, and this, I think, is, so thank you, councilmembers, for that, for your dedication to make sure we get this right and your dedication to continue to do so. I do believe that this is a transformative vote that we'll be taking tonight that will provide us, in our economic development efforts, a lot more flexibility and a lot more resources in order to do things that a sophisticated city deserves. And so it deserves a, we have a great staff right now, there's no doubt about it, and this will work on that foundation that they have created and will create an even more robust, successful economic development effort that will focus on a number of different areas that are important to the city. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and members, for that.
Mr. Mayor, I do have an amendment to offer. I do have an amendment to offer.
Yes.
Okay. We had one sentence where it was dropped off, so I'd like to offer that if I can. Okay. This is, and Camille, I'll give this to you, this is in the Exhibit A, Article Two, Section Two, Paragraph Two. Second sentence thereabouts. Right now, it reads, "Each director will be eligible to be selected to serve for additional terms without," and the amendment is to strike the word "without" and replace with[1477.42][1477.45]"not to exceed three consecutive terms." So it read, "Each director will be eligible to be selected to serve for additional terms not to exceed three consecutive terms." That's the amendment.
Second.
Yeah, okay. I'll favor the amendments. Say aye. Ayes have it. So the resolution as amended, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Ms. Manager.
Ladies. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. First, I would like to congratulate our Greenville City Fire Department. We just learned today, they are, Chief Horton and Chief Hyman are in Chicago, and they were reaccredited this afternoon. We are one of 100, I mean, we are one of 132 fire departments in the entire nation that are both accredited and have an ISO-1 rating. So big kudos to all of the work that all of our fire department, men and women, do every day, and it was very exciting to hear this afternoon about their successful reaccreditation. So congratulations to the fire department. Also, we are watching the weather for this week. Our public works teams have already been preparing as we start to try to, and Chief Horton has been talking to all of our emergency responding agencies today, just making sure that we're prepared should we need to be ready to deploy anything later this week, depending on the path of the tropical depression coming out of Florida. So we are working on that. We have our Startup Greenville event on Thursday night. Thank you to our economic development team for their big work on that and our communications team for their big work on that. This is a big event by the city of Greenville, and I hope each of you will be able to be there. So that's Thursday night. Tropical storm will be gone before then, so that's, what is it, going to be, 73 and sunny, something like that, Thursday night? 83. Well, you know, what's 10 degrees?
Where's that event?
It's at the drive, and it begins at 5:30.
Oh, okay.
In addition, I would like, our zoo has had several successful wins lately, and tonight was just, I think it's very important to recognize just what an asset that is to our community and what a big gift that was, and we're very excited to see that and hope to continue to see more of that in the future. We had a great tree ordinance presentation earlier this evening by Mr. Edward Kenny and Mr. Drew Smith, and if you haven't had a chance to listen to that, to the public, I would encourage you to go and learn more about what we're doing with our tree ordinance and our tree fund. And we had a great neighborhood presidents meeting last week, and I would like to thank the many members of the senior leadership team that attended. All of our net team, our neighborhood engagement team from our police department was there, our police lieutenants, and it was just a fabulous time and a great time to connect with our neighborhood presidents, and so we really appreciate that and really want to continue that level of engagement within our community. And with that, I have nothing further. I'm just kidding, I really did. No, I really do want to recognize Visit Greenville and the Greenville Arena District, both of whom are here tonight. They have been great partners to the city. They had excellent years last year, both of them had excellent years, and we are very fortunate to have their partnership and what they're able to bring to our community so that we continue to have the kind of offerings that the people who live here want to be able to participate in. So thank you both.
Okay, thank you. We have some special guests here tonight, Tim Justice.
Right, so I'd like to recognize Tim Justice and the group of chamber young professionals, affectionately known as Chamber YPs, that are here as our guest. If y'all could stand, and I should mention, Tim serves on our Visit Greenville Board, very dedicated man to the city, so if y'all could stand, and we'd love to have a picture.
I'll see y'all after the meeting. Everybody's a special guest except for Tim, but. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Meeting is earned.